Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce and tonight we are pleased to welcome candidates for the April 6, 2021 election for members of the Ball Chatham Board of Education. Assisting with the technology for tonight's virtual forum are Amy Byers, Director of the Chatham Area Public Library and Megan Freeman, Community Engagement Librarian for the Chatham Area Public Library. There are four seats that will be elected to the Board of Education and we have the six candidates running for these positions this evening with us. In the order which they will appear on the ballot, we have Tiffany Saunders, Sherry Winters, Andrea Rediger, William Brewer, Laura Calderon, and Anne Straley. Each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves, followed by a moderated question and answer session. To wrap up the forum, each candidate will be given three minutes to make any closing remarks. We've accepted questions from the community for this forum, which have been provided to our moderator, Greg Bishop, and he will ask these questions to our candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes then to provide their answers. Candidates who's answers exceed those two minutes will be muted at that time. At this point, we'd like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Greg Bishop. He is a reporter for the Center Square and Illinois Radio Network, covering the Illinois State House for radio stations across the state. He also hosts the news feed weekday mornings on 92.7, 94.7, and 970 WNY.
Well, and thank you very much for having me here to be the moderator for this important conversation about the community and about educating the youth in our community. And I look forward to hearing everybody's responses to the following questions. These are of course, questions that were cultivated from the community. I did try to tighten those up, so we'll make sure that we get plenty of time for all of the respondents to respond. But we start with the opening statements and in the order that they appear on the ballot, we'll start with Tiffany Saunders.
Hi, thank you. I'm the mom of two children. One is currently a sophomore and the other will start kindergarten in 2025. I've lived in the district for seven years. I'm a sociologist in the Department of Sociology and Anthropology at UIS with undergraduate and graduate degrees in the discipline. I also have a graduate certificate in the Scholarship of Teaching and Learning, which means I have additional training in conducting research on how classroom practices impact student learning. All of this has led to a student-centered approach to education. In my own teaching, I'm interested in how my actions impact student learning. I'm also interested in how policies, both the ones I develop in the context of my classes and those developed by others, impact the student experience and ultimately student learning. I'm solution-focused. Identifying challenges is far easier than envisioning solutions. My approach to developing solutions draws on creativity. I am a classically trained violinist after all, and strategic partnerships. It also draws on my skills in grant writing, which I use to fund my entire graduate education. Now I use those skills to fund research and to collaborate with organizations on initiatives that benefit the greater community. The link between my skills, organizational interests, and community needs was fostered through my experience in Leadership Springfield, which I completed in 2018. As we take what we've learned during the pandemic and transition to our new normal, we'll need individuals with different skills, experiences, and ideas. I bring all three. Thank you.
Well, now here are opening statements from Sherry Winters.
Hello. I am 59 years old and along with my husband Chris, we've lived in Chatham nearly 26 years. I'm a retired teacher of 23 years, not including the many years of substituting while our sons Jared and Josh were young. I completed my career of teaching 17 years right here in Chatham. Therefore, I would bring a unique perspective to the board. Our sons graduated from Glenwood High School, both of them growing up in the district, allowing me to understand the parent's side of the community. We have been volunteers with the Miss Illinois Miss America Organization for 20 years. We own the titles of Miss Central Illinois, Miss Springfield, Miss Prairie State, and for a few short years, Miss Chatham-Glenwood, providing scholarships for higher education, interview skills, and a large variety of volunteer opportunities for each title holder's platform or social impact initiative. We believe volunteerism is a cornerstone of every community. Being inspired throughout my school years, I always wanted to be a teacher, graduating from Quincy University, the first and only college graduate of the youngest of 14 children. The last seven of us were raised by a single mother who worked extremely hard to give her children a roof over their heads, food on the table, extracurricular activities, and a successful education, bringing another perspective to the board, the single-family home. Single-parent home, I'm sorry. When choosing where to move, we chose Ball Chatham for its school district and all that it has to offer. I have been through the many stages and growing pains of the school district where we were here to see the new high school being built. And I represented the administration when the then Board of Education during the media's walkthrough of the not-yet-completed Glenwood Elementary School. I have represented the staff as a union rep. I have been on the insurance committee and many other different groups that have come and gone over the years. I believe every child has the right to find success in the Chatham School District.
Next, we'll hear opening remarks from Andrea.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and to the library for hosting this forum. Thanks to Ashley Brinkman for the invitation to be here and for Amy Byers for this quiet space with good internet. I'm Andrea Rediger. My husband Tom and I have lived in Glenarm for 15 years and I've been at the Village Veteranary and right here in Chatham even longer. Tom's an attorney who directs the Civil Service Commission and we have two children in the district, an eighth grader and a sixth grader. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in accounting and information systems and a DVM from Purdue. We're supposed to describe our goals in this introduction, so I will tell you that my goal for the district is to achieve the goals already outlined in the strategic plan. There are 11 of them and they relate to things like academics, a balanced budget, fiscal planning, and staff development. That's why you serve on the school board, to work toward the district's stated goals and to be a bridge between the community and the schools. Now, my goal for this evening is to unmute myself, so I don't embarrass my children and to make sure everyone knows that I am on top of the new ISB guidelines and I am ready to work to offer a broader in-person learning opportunity. If elected to this board, I will work my tail off to make sure we do it well, that we honor everyone's recovery and safety needs, including teachers, and that there's equity and an excellent experience for remote learners. I'm also going to make sure everyone's concerns and ideas are heard and that we address all uncertainty. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for your consideration and for all the support you've given so far. Hope we have a great evening. Thanks.
Next, we'll hear from candidate William Brewer.
Good evening. My name's William Brewer and I'm the current President of the Ball Chatham Board of Education. My wife Christie and I have lived in Chatham for 19 years and we have two sons that attend school in the district. Our oldest is a freshman at Glenwood High School and our youngest is a seventh grader at Glenwood Middle School. From my perspective as a current board member, we have two very important issues facing our district immediately. One issue is how we navigate our way out of COVID-19 with the return to normalcy, which means full-day in-person learning. Having served as Board President during COVID-19 places me in a unique and strong position with respect to the knowledge base and experience in order to successfully get this accomplished. Another issue is our upcoming teacher's contract negotiations. I cannot stress enough how important experience is in this matter for all stakeholders in our district. If reelected, I'll be the only board member that has taken part in a teacher's contract negotiation. My experience in this will be crucial in having a negotiation process that results in a positive and fair contract between the Board of Education and our teachers' union. I'd like to take a moment to thank the Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce for organizing and hosting tonight's event. And I'd also like to thank my fellow candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you.
Next up, we'll hear from Laura Calderon.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to the Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight's forum and to the Chatham Area Public Library District for also assisting in the broadcast. And thank you to all of you who are tuning in. As Mr. Bishop mentioned, my name is Laura Calderon. My husband Miguel and I moved to Chatham 14 years ago with our children Mateo, Miles, and Nia, who are students in the district. I have been active in our schools for many years, serving on the BCEF Board, Ball Chatham Educational Foundation for six years, three years as president, and helping to raise more than a quarter of a million dollars to support our teachers and students. I'm an experienced nonprofit manager and am currently the Executive Director of the Illinois Public Transportation Association. I was selected to participate in the Edgar Fellows Program, a bipartisan executive leadership training program that taught me the importance of governing with compromise, civility, and compassion. I believe that every child should have access to the high-quality education that we have come to expect from Chatham schools. Working with others, I pledge to serve in a transparent, responsive, and respectful manner. I will always have a listening ear and independently weigh how each decision I would make impacts all stakeholders in the district. I have consistently been a vocal advocate for in-person learning and I feel that this is critical in ensuring the social and emotional needs of our students and assuring that their educational needs are adequately addressed. I'm passionate about supporting the district's work to provide exceptional educational opportunities for its students now and well into the future. And that is why I will help to ensure that the school board is also fiscally responsible in decision-making. I believe I have the experienced leadership skills and ability to build consensus that will help BCESD move forward. Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from Anne Straley.
Well, thank you very much to the Chamber of Commerce for putting together this forum and also to all my fellow candidates and their willingness to run during this pretty difficult time. The district, of course, is facing a number of complicated issues, whether it's the return to full-time in-person learning, the upcoming teacher contract negotiations, or the teacher shortage experienced at the federal and state level. We need exemplary leadership on the school board. I'm running because I believe I can bring my own talents within the communication and education fields and leadership experience to the board and give back to the community, a community that has given so much to my family. We moved here 11 years ago after a great deal of thought and consideration. My husband is full-time military and we initially came for his job, but I was lucky enough to continue my academic career as well at UIS. We have two boys, Philip and Benjamin, who are in high school and have grown up well, very well, thanks to fantastic teachers, directors, and coaches. I'm a college professor with 14 years of teaching experience in the fields of communication and journalism. I serve in many university leadership positions, the latest as Campus Senate Chair, which is an elected position. It's a shared governance position that works to serve the interest of faculty, staff, and students on campus, not unlike a school board member, actually. At the University of Illinois system level, I'm on University Senate's conference and this group meets monthly with the university president and reviews system budgetary reports and ongoing multi-university projects. Before I went into academia, I was an actual news journalist. So I was a news director, I was an anchor, and I was a reporter. And I was, as a news director, was in charge of all budgetary and personnel issues. So all of this experience really gives me a somewhat unique set of tools that would be useful as a school board member. So I think having a trained communicator on the board could prove instrumental in fostering trust. So I hope I can count on your vote on April 6.
Thank you all for the candidates for your opening statements. Now we'll go on to questions and brief ground rules, two minutes each to respond to the following questions. And if any other candidate's names are mentioned, we'll give a chance for 30 seconds of rebuttal. These questions were cultivated from questions submitted by members of the community. And the first question goes to Sherry Winters. How can the school board work with the business community to continue attracting more families to the district while ensuring high-quality education for all students?
Well, I feel like the school board can promote the community. We used to have a flyer that went out and talked about our school district being such a strong component of the community and it would go to the realtors. So when the realtors had people looking for homes, they would hand this off and show, you know, this is what the area schools are. And I think most of us would agree, we've moved here for the school district. So I think that's our first thing is to get new families into the community and continue to promote Chatham as the educational community to be. I also think that we need to continue to promote connections with the local businesses. Currently, there's a time when you can raise funds by going to a restaurant on a certain night of the week and that also promotes the students or the families to go to the restaurants. So it's a give and take. They both have one side or the other. You know, they both see the community and they both get involved in the community. And I know Chick-fil-A in Springfield, not that I should bring that name up, but Glenwood Intermediate School actually had their helpers do wait on the tables and wash the tables and stuff. And that was a huge fundraiser, but it also showed Springfield families that came in there what the Ball Chatham students were all about.
Now we'll hear from Andrea Rediger. Again, the question, how can the school board work with the business community to continue attracting more families to the district while ensuring high-quality education for all students? Andrea, I believe you are muted.
I am mortified. I'm mortified.
You've got two minutes.
I'm going to be so embarrassed. So I've worked in our little clinic in Main Plaza for a long time now and I've watched other businesses come and go along our little stretch. When I started there, there was a gas station across the street and now it's a restaurant and it's the third or fourth restaurant that's been in there. For our business and for all these little businesses on Main Street, we need to grow this town. Veterinarians are service providers and we need families to serve. We follow the families. There's no bigger draw here in town than these schools and the better they are, the more our whole economy will benefit. There is so much opportunity for collaboration and we've seen so much of it already around nutrition with Titan Fuel and with the neighborhood pantries. We can collaborate in other ways too, ways that go way beyond sponsorships. So I was reading about this company in Missouri last week and one thing that they do, they make bourbon barrels and the office staff is given one day a week to substitute teach in the schools and the owner of the company makes up the wages that they would have lost for not working in their job. And it's a way that the the business community is supporting the schools through this very tough time with our teacher shortage and especially the substitute teacher shortage. And there's just countless other ways. We could have expos, we could have reading events, we could have visual arts programs. We can do collaborative service events like Light Up the Park. I know that these things are easier said than done. There are always students who want to come observe in our office and they're not allowed to until they're 18. So I know it's hard, it's hard, but if anybody can solve these problems, it's going to be us.
Well, now hear from William Brewer. Again, the question is, how can the school board work with businesses to continue attracting more families to the district while ensuring high-quality education for all students?
Well, first, I'd like to mention that we do work with the community in a variety of ways. We have worked with the village in zoning and planning commissions as well as a few years back, you remember additional land was annexed to the Village of Chatham that put all six of our schools within the Village of Chatham. We also work with the local police department in a variety of ways. So I just want to start by saying those things are occurring right now. But when it comes down to it, you can always look for ways to grow them and those ways come through personal relationships and interactions in the community. What's good for the businesses in the community is also good for the school district and typically vice versa. It is important to note though, that you know, it's obviously we're in Chatham, but over 40% of our students have Springfield addresses. So we have to think about the bigger picture more than just our Village of Chatham and look at our district as a whole. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from Laura Calderon. How can the school board work with the business community to continue attracting more families to the district while ensuring high-quality education for all students?
Thank you. That's a great question. So I'll just mention, and I think like many others and many other of the candidates, we moved to Chatham for the schools. Chatham Schools has long been a destination district. And I think the key to continuing that reputation is to continue to strive to be on the cutting edge of educational trends. So I think as we think about the business community cultivating the partnerships with the businesses within Chatham and the greater Springfield area becomes key in terms of potentially partnering for investment in in additional offerings that maybe our district can provide. And that's something that I actually have quite a bit of experience on with regard to my time on the Ball Chatham Educational Foundation. Much of the work there that I have done and my fellow board members have done is to partner with businesses within our community, both in Chatham and in the Springfield area to invest in enhancing some of the programs that might draw families to our district. Particularly STEAM curriculum is something that we have focused on over the last several years. In fact, I believe we've invested somewhere in the neighborhood of $90,000 in just the last three years in the development of STEAM curriculum. So really staying ahead of the educational trends and continuing to partner with those businesses to add investment in our schools, I think is critical to continue that destination district that we sort of have the reputation of being.
Now we'll hear from Anne Straley. How can the school board work better with the business community?
You know, in my advertising and PR courses that I teach, we talk a lot about corporate social responsibility, which is a company's sense of responsibility towards the community and the environment. So when companies decide to partner with school districts and increase presence of their company is then created among students, parents, school staff, and the community. This presence creates a lasting positive image that in turn increases the company's profits and competitive advantage. When students achieve their goals in education, everybody benefits. So business involvement helps to show relevance to students. The students are then more motivated to get an education and more aware of how it correlates to success. So what I'm talking about is bringing people in, businesses, business leaders into the schools. When we talk about career education and things like that. When students see the relevance for pursuing a specific career in a specific industry, they're motivated not only to stay in school, but to do their best. So this helps create positive growth within the community over the long term. It's really a win-win situation. Businesses should be vested in education because of their need for a strong pool of local workers to choose from and consumers who can actually afford their products as well. So there's a wealth of opportunities available for businesses to partner with their local schools. I know that we are doing it now, but we can do even more in the future. School and business partnerships create, as I said, a win-win situation for schools, businesses, and more importantly, for students.
Next, we'll hear Tiffany Saunders. How can the school board better work with the business community to attract more families to the district while ensuring high-quality education for all students?
Yeah, this is a really great question. And as many people know, I am a big fan of strategic partnerships. So the ability to connect our school district, the teachers and the students with local businesses is really right up my alley, right in my wheelhouse and something that I would certainly be working towards if elected to the board. One of the things that I think is really, really beneficial for these types of partnerships is that it could be really, and a really important connection for our students who aren't college-bound. So if we think about having connections to local businesses and might immediately plug them into some of these work opportunities and then allow them a pathway to self-sufficiency. So one of the things that we have to acknowledge is that while, you know, not everyone is college material, not everyone wants to go to college. And so we have to be thinking about strategic ways to support our students who are not college-bound. I'm also thinking about one of the premier sort of business training programs in our area and that's Sangamon CEO. It's a really, really great program if you don't know much about it. But what happens is that students apply in their junior year and then they participate in their senior year. So I can envision an entrepreneurial program that draws on local businesses and then taps our students in their freshman or sophomore or junior year that could create a pipeline into Sangamon CEO. It's not a perfect pipeline because the reality is that all of them won't be accepted because it's a county-wide program. But just think about the entrepreneurial skills and experience that we would be developing in sort of our homegrown talent. So I think that that's a real important thing to think about at the local level and it's also important to local communities. Thank you.
Thank you again to all the candidates for your responses. And the next question, how can the board best balance the district's needs with limited taxpayer resources and demands from educators and upcoming contract negotiations? And how do you plan to attract the highest quality educators and support staff? We'll start with Andrea Rediger.
So that was very long. Could you read that one more time, please?
Absolutely. How can the board best balance the district's needs with limited taxpayer resources and demands from educators in the upcoming contract negotiations? And how do you plan to attract the highest quality educators and support staff?
Okay, thank you. So it's really, really expensive to educate a child, just like it's really, really expensive to own a pet. It just is and things cost what they cost. And we've decided as a society that we want to pay for education through property taxes rather than having federal oversight of our schools. So I think that because we, because we don't want to pay income taxes and we don't want to pay property taxes and we really don't want the federal government doing it, then the business community is going to have to help us with this challenge. And I know that nobody wants to hear that, but I think it's true. As far as attracting educators, there are a whole bunch of solutions that the the Regional Office of Education has put out, there's like 15 of them, but the ones that interest me the most are the ones where you try to grow your own, where either you take your own students and try to prompt them to go into education and then you hire them back, or you take your really motivated staff members and you help them become educators, you help them get licensed. As far as negotiating with the teachers' union, I think that having an attitude of collaboration and understanding that the teachers' union is made up of us. It's not us versus them. There are teachers and that because in general, our goal is to work together, understanding that they are coming from a place of integrity and we are coming from a place of integrity and giving everybody the benefit of the doubt is the way that we can move forward past that.
Next, we'll hear from, next from William Brewer. How can the board best balance the district's needs in the upcoming contract negotiations? And how do you plan to attract the highest quality educators and support staff?
So, excuse me, I'm going to take those questions in reverse order. Let's talk about the attraction. First and foremost, I believe we currently have the highest quality educators and support staff within our district. So I think we're doing a fine job of attracting them because they're here. We need to continue to do things to continue to attract more of them. With respect to the upcoming contract negotiations, I'm the only one that's actually sat through one of those negotiations. There are things that occur in contract negotiations that are very unique and unless you've been part of one, you're not going to know. Now, it's important to have two-way dialogue and communication in contract negotiations and those must occur through everyone at the table, having the best of intentions when the negotiations start. I am very confident that that is what will occur during the upcoming contract negotiations. I firmly believe that the relationship between the administration, school district board, and the union has made, grown by leaps and bounds over the past several months and even year. And not everything's perfect all the time, but you know, it's a good process and I'm looking forward to the upcoming contract negotiations and I'm eager to get them started. Thank you.
Next, Laura Calderon. How does the board best balance the district's needs in the upcoming contract negotiations? And how do you plan on attracting the highest quality educators and support staff?
Yeah, so I would say in my opinion, one of the most important duties of a school board member is contract negotiations, which obviously we know are coming up here this quickly this spring. Our teachers are our biggest asset in this district and so attracting and retaining high-quality talent in our district is really a critical component for the success of the district. It's also the duty of the board to be fiscally responsible. So finding that balance between fiscal
So finding that balance between fiscal responsibility and attracting and retaining high-quality teachers is indeed one of the biggest challenges that face school boards. I think that we have to think about the culture in our district and in our community and the culture that I think you create from the top down. So the culture that the school board creates, that the administration creates, and if the culture is a positive one and one in which families want to come to, it's also likely one that teachers want to come to and want to teach in a district in which teachers would like to teach. So for that part of it, I think that's something that we've done a fairly good job on. But I think that continuing that sort of positive culture within the district is critical in continuing to attract and retain those teachers. In terms of providing high-quality education and being fiscally responsible, I think that one thing that I mentioned in the last question about cultivating those community partnerships and investment really can help to solve some of those financial issues, although not all. So I look forward to working on this challenging issue.
Next, we'll hear Anne Straley. The question, how does the board best balance the district's needs with limited taxpayer resources and demands from educators in upcoming contract negotiations? And how do you plan to attract the highest quality educators and support staff?
It's a toughie, but I think that we need to start with building trust between the administration and the teachers and work towards building a deal that will keep the Ball Chatham School District competitive with surrounding districts. We need to work very, very hard to retain our quality teachers and then, of course, to attract, as you said, new high-quality educators in order to maintain and then improve our reputation. I think it's very important, when you talk about negotiations, for school board members to be in on those negotiations. The school board member would then know the details of the contract. They would be in the room, on the front line, in essence, hearing firsthand the concerns of the teachers and what's at stake. It's also really just a matter of respect. A school board member is in a position to make really big decisions that affect careers, and obviously they're looking at fiscal responsibility for the school district as well. If the member is not at the negotiation table, what does that say about respect? If you have all the school board members present in the negotiation room, you also have people who have different viewpoints and come from different areas of expertise, it then would be more difficult for one person on the board to sway the negotiations one way or the other. Real communication with teachers has to start long before negotiations in order to get a positive and fair contract. That communication would hopefully begin to build trust. During negotiations, there also needs to be transparency between the board and the teachers' union on why some particular points may be denied. There may be a very, very good reason for those denials, but if both parties are not informed about that reason, mistrust can grow and lead to a negative outcome. We have high expectations in the Ball Chatham School District, which is a good thing. But to make those expectations a reality, we need to take care of our school community as well with dignity and with respect, especially in what can be a very highly-charged environment such as a contract negotiation.
Next, Tiffany Saunders. Again, the question, how can the school board best balance the district's needs in the upcoming contract negotiations? And how do you plan to attract the highest quality educators and support staff?
So I think one of the ways that this can happen is at the outset, having clearly defined goals as a district and then articulating what those goals are to the community and then creating funding priorities on the basis of those goals. And teachers are certainly part of, part of the goals and part of what we should be thinking about when it comes to building a strong community. I like to take the parent approach when we're thinking about working with teachers, and that is teachers are our partners and not our adversaries. So I understand that in the past, you know, sometimes the concerns of the board and the concerns of the teachers have been viewed or construed as opposite. And sometimes they've interacted like that's the case. But I actually think both are coming from a profound concern for our students and what's in our students' best interests. But again, the board has this additional sort of fiscal responsibility that, again, I think could be alleviated or attenuated just a bit by being very transparent about what those competing sort of obligations and goals are. I know speaking with teachers is very, very important, having open two-way conversation, really coming to understand what their workday is like and what their needs are. That doesn't mean that we'll be able to meet every single need or concern, but we will at least have the information in order to move forward and to make informed decisions. I think that having a contract negotiation that isn't contentious is certainly a way to attract high-quality educators into our district and a way to attract high-quality staff. Having people not feel like they have to fight for every little thing could certainly make us feel like an attractive place to work, an attractive place to retire from.
And to Sheri Winters, the question again, how can the board best balance the district's needs with limited taxpayer resources and demands from educators in upcoming contract negotiations? And how do you plan to attract the highest quality educators and support staff?
Well, naturally, if the teachers would be paid competitive with the surrounding school districts, in addition to the reputation of the Ball Chatham School District, we would attract more high-quality teachers. Currently, our district is not being paid with smaller districts that it's surrounded, not being paid equally. It's one of those things you'll get what you pay for. We also need to address teacher morale, and that would keep our already high-quality teachers. I know that everyone's heard this before, but I'm the only candidate that's been on the teacher's side. So I've seen what the teachers have asked for, and I've not always agreed on everything they've asked for. But yes, I do think we need to be paid at a competitive rate of the surrounding school districts.
Thank you again to all of the candidates. This is the Ball Chatham School District Board of Education Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Area Public Library District. And we're hearing questions cultivated from the community. Next question is, what role do board members have in interacting with state policymakers to address concerns of the community, parents, and students? And we'll start with William Brewer.
That role would be unique to each individual board member and their comfort level. You know, we get a bunch of informative information about legislation and things of that nature from ISB and the Illinois Association of School Boards. And it's more than fine to reach out to your local representative and/or state senator regarding those issues. But there is, you do have to be cautious there because one of the things that I worry sometimes gets forgotten is that an individual board member by themselves has no authority or power. We are a board of seven, of which a majority rules. And within that, too, there's also needs to be caution that just based on board policy, the spokesperson for the board is the board's president, whomever the board elects to that position. I would like to take a moment, though, to circle back, not to address anyone specifically, but to your last question. And I want to make a couple of things very apparent to the public that's watching right now. Over the course of the past four years since I've been on the school board, we have added 21 teachers. I want to repeat that. We have added 21 teachers from what we had four years ago. So we are doing a good job with attracting and retaining high-quality teachers. They're in our district. I see them working. They're here. Also, with respect to communication, I'd mentioned this during the last forum. You know, the board president, which is me, and the vice president meet with the union officers every month. And we're willing to meet with them whenever they want to. The communication is there and it's ready to go. Also, I want to say, since I've been board president for two years, it has been my instruction and request of the board that all board members be present at every negotiation session. And I want to touch one more final thing here. I've heard some things talking about a parent approach and the sides. As a board member, you don't have the luxury to look at it from a parent. You have to look at it from a board member and make decisions on the entire community. Thank you.
Next, Laura Calderon. What role do board members have in interacting with state policymakers to address concerns of the community, parents, and students?
Thank you. You know, I think that's a, that's a, an interesting question and a tough issue because I think it would be appropriate for a school board member to talk to their elected official potentially about how a pending piece of legislation might impact the school district. However, I think they would need to be careful not to portray the districts, portray that their own opinion was, in fact, the opinion of the district. So I think that's where the challenge comes in. I think it is the responsibility of the school board to monitor pending legislation that might impact the district and potentially communicate with both the State Board of Education, maybe the Illinois Association of School Boards, and then potentially local legislators with regard to how that legislation might impact their district. But to be careful not to portray their own opinion as the opinion of the district because I think, as Bill mentioned, you're one school board member that represents a group of seven school board members and ultimately represents a community and to assure that you aren't speaking on behalf of the district while portraying your own personal ideology, I think that would be critical to avoid.
Mr. Brewer, your name was mentioned. Would you like 30 seconds?
No, that's all right. Thank you, though, for offering, Greg. I appreciate it.
Next, Anne Straley. What board do, what role do board members have in interacting with state policymakers?
You know, I really see that question as being more about like information gathering. So whenever an issue is presented to the school board, I think it is the responsibility of every school board member to gather as much information as they can about it. If that means that you're talking to the people that are putting forth a bill just to gather, you know, the information behind it, or you're talking to people that are experts, you're talking to ISB, you're talking to the community members, you're talking to teachers, all of those kinds of things, whatever is more relevant to the issue that is coming before the board, there's absolutely, I don't think there's anything wrong with actually just getting more information. And when you talk about my experience within that, coming from a news background, 16 years within the news business, working with state legislators, interviewing lots of politicians, also looking at my role as an academic who is trained to gather information, who is trained to sift through it to try to find some connections and things like that. This is something I'm very, very used to. So again, I think that if you approach going to policymakers from the area of this is, I just need to, I need to figure out where this is coming from and what kind of implications it could have on the school system, in the school district. I think that that is a good way to approach that particular question. Thank you.
Next, Tiffany Saunders. What role do board members have in interacting with state policymakers?
So I do think it'll be up to individuals to decide their level of comfort in interacting with state policymakers, and I think some people will obviously be more comfortable than others. I do have experience in that regard, and that's just coming from higher ed. You know, UIS has partnered with state policy or, you know, done things at the state capitol over the course of the years, so over the years that I've been here. So I do, you know, know a few state policy members. I also have connections with ISB as well. I've done some work with them. So there's definitely some of those connections that I have, but never once have I approached any of that work as representing anyone or anything other than myself. So that is Tiffany showing up to, you know, ask questions or ask for clarification or to work directly with these entities. And I think maintaining that level of distance becomes really, really important. And this is actually very similar. So what it takes, for example, as a researcher, so I'm a trained researcher, I'm trained in research methods, and there's a level of distance that the person who's engaging in research has to keep from their respondents and from the people they're gathering information from. So I would approach any sort of information gathering that's tied to, you know, the work that I have to do on the board, to that sort of, that distance. Maintaining, yeah, maintaining my identity as speaking for myself and no one else, just as I already do.
Next, for Sheri Winters, what role do board members have in interacting with state policymakers to address concerns of the community, parents, and students?
As a retired individual, I would take every opportunity to study and to bring to the board the questions or concerns that I might have so that the board can present itself as a team to the state policymakers. When the board represents as a team, I think the policymakers would take us more seriously as opposed to one individual bringing a problem. So again, I would just study whatever questions or ideas or thoughts or unfunded mandates, whatever comes up, and then I would bring it to the board so we could present it to the policymakers as a team.
And Andrea Rediger, what role do board members have in interacting with state policymakers?
So I would take my cues from IASB on that. I haven't been through any training on what a board member is allowed to do or not allowed to do. Last week, they asked for people to fill out witness slips. So I filled out a witness slip against the HB7 bill, that forced consolidation bill. But I did that as an individual. I think as a board member, maybe thinking about strategic communication in encouraging the community to advocate for our students in the way that they interact with our government or their legislators, that would be something that I'm sure that we could do. For example, we did not fund the evidence-based funding formula again this year. And whether you supported its creation or not, that's the bill that we have, and that's how we get funding. So every person in this community could be petitioning their lawmakers to try to make sure they understand how important it is to fund that formula because at this rate, it will be 30 years before our district is brought to full adequacy. So the board can ask the community to advocate, and I would want to learn what sort of advocacy a board member could do correctly.
Again, thank you all. We're continuing on with questions for the Ball Chatham School District Board of Education Candidate Forum here on Zoom. I appreciate everybody for tuning in and everybody's patience. Continuing on with questions cultivated from the community. As the COVID-19 pandemic subsides, what are the greatest challenges to ensuring the highest-quality education setting while maintaining proper health protocols? Laura, we'll start with you.
Well, that's a great question, and I think something that's top on the minds of all of the community members in Ball Chatham schools and probably around the state. I think number one, getting our kids back to school full-time, in-person, assuring that education instruction opportunities return to pre-pandemic levels. I think that it's going to be necessary to assess the learning loss that exists. And I have been doing some research and experts in the education field feel there's anywhere from one to five months education loss for students. And so that's something we're going to need to assess and determine if there's some extra, what many are calling boosts, boosts that are needed, possibly over the summer and over the course of the next year to try to catch students up and get them back to grade level. I think also that it's going to be necessary to assess the social-emotional impact of the pandemic and how we might be able to support students in that. And then lastly, I think there's something that some other districts have done that ours has not done, including Springfield Public Schools, which is surveying teachers and staff about the social-emotional health impact that they have experienced with regard to the pandemic and their workplace stress level and figuring out if there are some support services we can offer them as well. Because obviously, supporting them and assuring that their mental health issues are addressed, if necessary, will assure that they are in top shape to continue educating our students in the fashion that they have. So thank you.
Next, Anne Straley. As the COVID-19 pandemic subsides, what's the greatest challenges to ensure highest-quality education while maintaining the proper health protocol? Next, Anne Straley, as the COVID-19 pandemic subsides, what are the greatest challenges to ensure highest quality education while maintaining the proper health protocols?
Well, really, you know, it's what we're in right now. It's, you know, as we're looking at the new guidelines, guidances come down from ISB. In terms of getting our students back in person. This is something that we're grappling with as a school district, and I know that if I was to be elected to the school board, it's something that we would be working on. Throughout the entire summer and figuring out all the different ins and outs and things like that. Obviously, students desperately need the academic, social and mental benefits of being in school. In person as much as they possibly can full time. So as a parent. Of of two high schoolers myself, one who's a junior and is, you know, looking at colleges and applying for colleges. And certain courses that obviously he has to take before he graduates. I'm in this with everybody. I applaud the efforts of teachers and the staff for what they have done. Since all of this went down, both of my kids are in the hybrid learning and it has. It's it's amazing what to have teachers have rotated and how hard they have actually worked. To make this happen. And I know that many people are also taking advantage of doing the virtual learning as well. So that's, you know, that's one more issue that we have to to tackle as we move towards. In-person learning and more full days is like, how will we still tackle the virtual learning aspect of all of this? For those families who whose student is either in compromised medically compromised, or they have a family member who's medically compromised. So all of this is coming at us absolutely right now. And I know that a lot of parents, a lot of community members are. Are frustrated just because, you know, it's like, what's going to happen? But I know that administrators are working hard, so hopefully. We'll see and we will keep working towards that outcome. Thank you.
Tiffany Saunders, as the COVID-19 pandemic subsides, what are the greatest challenges to ensuring the highest quality educational settings while maintaining proper health protocols?
So I think some of the biggest challenges will be related to equity and inclusion. The thing that certainly has been handed down in those new. And in those new ISB guidelines is the maintaining of sort of that that hybrid option for families. So we'll have to figure out methods. That still maintain high quality education for those families who needs, who still need that hybrid option. I think one of the other challenges that we'll have to continue contend with is the challenge of space. One of the things that has happened as a result of the COVID pandemic. Is the rearrangement and reconfiguration and sort of new ideas about how we use space. And I'm talking about sort of classroom spaces, but also other spaces like cafeteria and other sort of shared spaces. So some of the education literature has really. Pitched this as an opportunity to explore what it means to have flexible learning spaces without within classrooms and within buildings. And so this is perhaps an opportunity to think about how we can incorporate some of those flexible learning spaces sort of beyond. The preschool years and the kindergarten years, because again, that distancing, while it's not as big as it's been in the past, will still need to be maintained in some ways. We'll also have to be thinking about some trauma-informed methods. This community, we as individuals have experienced something fairly traumatic, right? So we'll have to figure out how to incorporate students back into, you know, that full. Day of learning in a in a way that addresses any trauma that they they might have experienced as a result of of the pandemic. So that's going to take partnering with ourselves, partnering with, you know, other community members and partnering with teachers as well.
Next, Sherri Winters, as the COVID-19 pandemic subsides, what are the greatest challenges?
Well, understanding that some decisions are dictated by. The Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health. These situations or these reasons need to be clarified for the public and for the parents. I am very aware that there has been. A 30% increase in high schoolers visiting in the ER for mental health reasons. And it is thought that it is because the students need to be in school. So. I'm definitely for getting the schools back to full time the best we can. After speaking with the teachers. Of the district, I have to agree that returning to school for fourth quarter would be too much of a disruption. Even with the new guidelines set in place, which would require additional cleaning. And there is not that time in the day to do that. So to return at this time would cause too much disruption. Statistics show that students are that are set into routine are more successful. So. We, as a community, need to support the decision to continue this routine that's set in place. The students will be resilient and will fall right back into a new routine this fall. I will adamantly support returning to school this fall. I would also like to see the option of virtual learning to continue for the students that are finding success at this time. As I have written in my Talk About It Tuesday series, I've spoken with teens of this exact situation. I was told that some students work better quietly in their home. I know my youngest would have fared better in this situation. These students should be allowed to participate in extracurricular activities that would be given the parents a choice based on their own home schedule and continued fears of the pandemic. It might even alleviate some overcrowding in the classrooms if this was allowed. Our colleges allow students to go online, so even if we just allow the high schoolers the option of virtual learning, I think that would be. Good for us.
Next, Andrea Rediger, COVID-19 pandemic subsides, what are the greatest challenges to ensuring the highest quality educational settings while maintaining proper health protocols?
So three big ones are going to be distancing ventilation and transportation. Another huge one is going to be creating a virtual option for the students who need it that is equitable and that promotes. Connection and communication rather than. You know, true isolation. So besides those two, I think a lot about things like children who have foregone healthcare, who may have vision and dental and lapsed vaccination issues. I think that a lot of students are going to have a need to process the loneliness and isolation that they may have felt over the last year. And upper grade students are going to need help with credit recovery if that's a problem and making sure that they have everything that they need to graduate on time. But also, I think that the staff is going to have support needs, and we should be trying to anticipate those right from the start because. The thing that will make us the most successful is a healthy, restored, recovered, well-functioning staff. So um, this past fall, I sat in on a webinar for educators and it was about self-care. It wasn't for me, so I didn't really participate. But I. I witnessed a level of trauma that was stunning. And I am worried that we need to help them recover so that they can help us be successful. We cannot ignore it and pretend that everything just goes right back to normal. That would be gaslighting and it would be counterproductive. Thanks.
Next, William Brewer, as the COVID-19 pandemic subsides, what are the greatest challenges ahead?
Well, first, I want to acknowledge how challenging this past year has been for everyone involved. And I'd like to thank our teachers, staff, leadership, students and our community as a whole for their willingness to be flexible and adaptive during this past year. It's truly commendable and it's truly worth noting. I'd like to kind of touch on the new guidelines that came out on Tuesday. You know, the these, this guideline was, in my personal estimation, the biggest movement that we've seen in this COVID pandemic. In terms of relaxing some of the restrictions and regulations within our state. It without a doubt is a game changer. In my personal opinion, this. Directive that came down is is that a directive? It essentially is saying whatever you're currently doing with respect to in-person learning, try to do more and explore those opportunities. It is true that district administration and leadership is looking through every possible way to do that. And with respect to a challenge of things, in in my opinion, the greatest challenge we have is this. Potential paralysis by analysis. We know a lot more today than we knew last summer, and we'll know even more tomorrow than we know today. It is time to start putting this stuff behind us. Enough is enough eventually, and every day is important. And we need to be consistently moving in the direction that is a return to normalcy as soon as possible. Thank you.
This is the Ball Chatham School District Board of Education Candidate Forum sponsored by the Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Area Public Library. I'm Greg Bishop, your moderator this evening. Onto the next question. What role do board members have in political conversations in all venues, including on social media? We'll start with Anne Stray Straley, rather. Apologize.
No, no problem. Well, this is a, this is a really good question. When you talk about a board member, we are not supposed to be affiliated with a particular party. In fact, we we don't run as Democrats or Republicans or or libertarians. We run just as people because you don't vote along a party line. I think that's very important to remember. When you're talking about your question, because we're here to serve the whole school district as a school board member. That means that we need to listen to everybody, you know, because we have various stakeholders. Within the school system, we have to, we have teachers and we have administrators and we have students and we have. Parents and we have taxpayers and we have community members and all these people, and we represent them all. Within this school's district. So therefore, when it comes to a political communication. We need to be extremely careful with that. You asked a question about social media and how to use social media effectively. I think that's a very, very good question as we're going through this process right now. Within the election. I think that social media, coming as a communication professor myself. Social media is is a is a great tool to get information out there. To connect with people, to connect with voters, especially as you're going through an election cycle. But it also can devolve into a lot of different things in which people are just kind of jockeying to have the last word. As opposed to actually listening and responding and and seeking new information. And and that's really, it's not. It's not coming down on the Chatham community itself. It's really looking across the board at the national community itself. And we just need to be very careful. When we engage in in that type of communication.
Next, we'll hear from Tiffany Saunders, what role do board members have in political conversations in all venues, including on social media?
Yeah, so I tend to agree. And it primarily that's because I I choose also not to engage in political conversations, even when, you know, even. Not as a member of the board. I think that, you know, again, that nonpartisan aspect is really, really important. Social media has a place. So but I think it's and 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 different social media sites certainly have. A benefit and and a different culture sort of attached to attached to them. I see them as incredibly beneficial for getting immediate access to information. But with all tools, we have to work together sort of as a group, as a community. To decide whether some of the norms associated with using those specific tools. I think, you know, if if this is a concern in our district, we could certainly work together with the various constituents to to. Develop. Sort of ways that 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 those different constituents would want to be engaged with on social media. So I'm not. I'm not anti-social media for sure. I just, for example, choose to use social media in a particular way. And the way that I choose to use it doesn't involve political conversations. It doesn't involve debating. That's not how I choose to use social media at all. And so it wouldn't be the way that I would use social media if elected either. Again, I think these tools are important. I love social media for getting information out quickly. But we just have to be careful about how we engage in those spaces. It's very easy to forget that we're one community. When we're engaging in those spaces at times. Thanks.
Sherri Winters, what role do board members have in political conversations in all venues, including on social media?
Well, first, I think our constituents need to know that we aren't a political party to run for the school board. So but social media is a double-edged sword. I've always said that I will stay me, an honest, respectful listener. And I think before I speak, not saying all the time, but I'm I'm human. Sometimes we all need to wait 24 hours before we respond to the negativity on social media, because social media can easily present negativity. I've seen, I've been called names myself already just since running for school board, and I feel like. The people calling the names don't really know me. So again, you got to be very careful. I don't think the Board of Education. Per se needs to be presenting anything on social media unless it is approved by the entire board. With all that being said, I want to say that I ran my campaign as an independent. I've declined donations of any kind, and I've declined. Meeting up as groups. I met up with members of the community through my genuine conversation independently. I have no need to answer to anyone, allowing me to make it a priority to stay honest and forthcoming without fear of speaking up. So in other words, I can proudly say I owe no one. And. I I what I owe is to the school district and the community to help the students and help the community continue to grow. So again, social media, wait 24 hours, as your grandma would say.
Thank you, Andrea Rediger. What role do board members have in political conversations in all venues, including on social media?
So board members are public figures and they're representatives of the district. And as such, they need to behave differently in public. I think that it is crucial that a board member be committed to equity. They have to be nonpartial, nonpartisan. And open to other views. They have to believe in public education as a public good. And they have to be willing to make personal sacrifices for the public good, and that may or may not be a person's personal politics. As far as communications, board members' communications can be subject to records acts and can be FOIAed, even conversations on. Social media, even on Facebook forums. So I think, I just think no good can come of it, and I don't plan to be on a forum like that if I get elected at all.
Thank you. William Brewer, what role do board members have in political conversations in all venues, including on social media?
Well, first, I'd like to say, you know, our our country is in a situation where, again, everyone's trying to compartmentalize and put people in different boxes. And it seems like folks are more interested in dividing us than uniting us. Unfortunately, we live in a world now where any conversation that's engaged in or any dialogue that occurs. People seem to think it's of political nature or it's in political nature. So, you know. I think it's important to remember that one of the fundamental great things about our country is freedom of speech. And with that, it means that I don't have to like what anyone says. I don't have to agree with what anyone says. But I need to respect their right to say it, just like I would hope that they would do others. Where there's a lot of dialogue that occurs on social media that does quickly devolve into. Things such as name-calling and a variety of things like that. Obviously, none of that's okay. But we need to get back to the point to where reasonable people should be able to agree to disagree. And if you and I disagree on an issue, it doesn't mean you're a bad person or I'm a bad person. And we have to stop the arguments. And instead of arguing, let's have the debate. Let's talk about it. Let let's stop telling each other why we're wrong, and let's start trying to persuade one another why we believe we're right. So, thank you.
Laura Calderon, what role do board members have in political conversations, including in social media venues?
Well, as has been mentioned, of course, this is a nonpartisan election and and maintaining that. Independence is is important for school board members and and essentially maintaining that they represent all the constituencies that elect them. Including parents and also the constituencies that they rep, parents and taxpayers, I guess I should should say, but also the constituencies that they represent. That may or may not be taxpayers such as teachers, administrators, students, of course, and staff within the district. But in terms of of their own use of social media in terms of their 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 personal space on social media. I think that. I think that it's problematic to start to. I think that it's problematic to start to uh, try to limit. Um, an individual's right to express their own personal opinion within their own personal space, even within social media. That said, I do think it's important that uh, school board members portray, are portrayed. And portray the district in a positive light. Um, and I think in order to do that. Um, they have to be careful what they're saying publicly. Um, be careful to always be respectful and compassionate and positive. Um, but it is also important to distinguish that um, when they speak. Potentially on their views on social media, um, if that's something they so choose, not something that I typically do. But if it's something they were to choose in that personal space, that they distinguish that those are their own personal views rather the view, than the views. Of um, the district or the school board as a whole. Um, so thank you.
Our next question, some of you touched on this in the first question. What more can the district do to collaborate with the business community to develop students' trade skills, entrepreneurship and community engagement? Tiffany Saunders, we'll start with you.
Yeah, so I did talk about this um, just a little bit. Um, I think we can um, think about partnering with businesses to create internships. Um, creating some of that one-to-job training um, that are, that are um, students will need. Um, I think or may need, I think um, we can partner with businesses to um, understand the experiences and skills. That are required for the workforce, so that changes over time. And so I think it's important to understand when those changes happen. We can also tie that into classroom learning and classroom learning to jobs. So understanding why um, or how something matters in the real world happens obviously at the toddler stage with a lot of why questions. But it also happens with teenagers and in the young adult years. So it could be a really important connection um, with, between businesses and teachers. And then teachers passing that down to students to understand the how and why things matter. Um, this, again, as I said before, these partnerships could be really, really important for our students who aren't college-bound. Um, or who aren't college-bound right away. Um, I think what's also, I talked about this before. Um, building new programs um, that, that allow our, our students to build skills. Or grow skills or even to just explore whether or not a particular field even interests them. Sometimes we think that we want to go into a field and then we experience the field and realize that it wasn't actually the right fit for us. So I think if we can figure out how to create these strategic partnerships with businesses, we can give students those um, sort of invaluable skills. Um, those invaluable experiences that may even help um, with that pipeline. So for those students who are headed to college, maybe they'll have an easier time um, eliminating majors, if not picking majors. So I think there's a lot of potential there um, if we really work towards strategic partnerships.
Thank you. Sherry Winters, what more can the district do to collaborate with the business community to help develop students' trade skills, entrepreneurship? And community engagement?
Well, I think with House Bill twenty-one seventy, um, the increase of the graduation requirements kind of takes away. Um, what limits the students' abilities to explore their own interests before they graduate. And that's basically what you're talking about here is the um, ability to explore some other options. As I had presented in the last forum, that not all students are gonna go to college and, and, or college material. And um, so it would be nice if we could offer some high school credit. For a student to go into the explorers program or go into visit and, and job shadow um, a nursing at SIU. Um, we have lots of, with Springfield being our neighbor and as um, it was stated earlier that forty percent of our student addresses are in Springfield. We have lots of options in Springfield to work with and I think it would be nice if the, if the school board and the high school. Uh, teachers could get together and explore those options and to see where we could fit them in. To um, a maybe a junior or senior's class schedule.
Thank you. Andrea Rediger, what more can the district do to collaborate with the business community to develop students' trade skills, entrepreneurship? And community engagement?
So the hard thing about putting students in area businesses or um, enterprises is the liability. It's gonna be a lot easier to get tradespeople or professionals into schools to make presentations. So there could be a real role for community members to help students understand the array of choices. That may be available to them um, as far as certifications or credentialing programs. That they may need to go through, um, what electives make sense, what is the job outlook for different professions? What is gonna be in demand? What are the problems with such and such professions? So um, I did talk about some of those collaborations that could be possible earlier. Uh, expos, art shows, you know, books, those, those kinds of things, but um. I think using the community as a resource to help students plan, that's where I would put my focus.
William Brewer, what more can the district do to collaborate with the business community to develop students' trade skills, entrepreneurship and community engagement?
Um, I think it's a matter of focusing on some things. Um, in today's society, we're hyper-focused on the expectation. For people to go to college after high school and uh, having that hyper-focus on that sometimes makes those kids. That um, don't want to go down that path feel diminished in some way. So we, we need to get back to a place where um, high school is not only preparing kids for higher education. But it's also preparing children, um, kids that are getting ready to enter the workforce. It is just as important that we have kids that are ready to enter the trades as it is that we have kids that are ready to go on to higher education. And we need to be focused on that as well with equal importance. You know, i- it would be great if there was a way to um, have, provide more a day in the life of. Type programs for children um, with respect to maybe they could job shadow and/or do some level of apprenticeship. Presentations are wonderful and it can be a great resource to even have a library of presentations of a day in the life of. But for um, children, at least in my experience, to really understand what they want to do with their lives as they're trying to make those decisions when they're sixteen, seventeen years old. Is to be hands-on and see it. And it's important for us to um, be focused on providing those opportunities.
Laura Calderon, what more can the district do to collaborate with the business community and offer students' trade skills, entrepreneurship and community engagement?
Uh, great question. So I, I think that continuing to cultivate the relationship with the Capital Area Career Center is important. Um, and the opportunities that, that it can provide for the students in the district and particularly ones that potentially may not be. On the college track. Um, I, I think continuing to um, work with the Sangamang CEO program. Is an excellent opportunity for our students um, in terms of that entrepreneurship that you mentioned. And um, I, I also think it's important that we think about our students with learning disabilities. And how we might be able to partner with businesses in the community to offer some of those transition planning. Um, type roles um, or uh, training for our students with learning disabilities and. And how they might be able to um, to go and work in these uh, businesses in the community. To help them learn some of those life skills and, and um, and job type skills that will be important. As they move through that transition planning. Um, so I, I really think just continuing to work with the business community, cultivating those relationships and, and. Um, and partnering with them to offer opportunities for students, potentially for internships or job shadow programs. Um, and, and really trying to be creative in how we fit those things in. Um, for our students in their schedules as we um, also are faced with. Um, increased graduation requi- requirements um, that have been passed down by the state.
Thank you. Ann Strahley, what more can the district do to collaborate with the business community to develop students' trade skills, entrepreneurship? And community engagement?
Well, I really think that students do respond well um, when they have people that, that talk to them and are passionate themselves. About their job, their career, whatever it may be. I know that personally, that's what kind of got me started on the career. That I had because I had somebody come to my school, my, I think it was my sophomore year. And, and that led to an opportunity for me to do mentoring, them to mentor me, to do some job shadowing, that kind of thing. That is wonderful. That's a fantastic opportunity, but um, as has been said by many different people, sometimes that's not always possible. Um, or it's not being received in a way that is, you know, very passionate by the students and that kind of thing. So I think that there's more to say about getting students involved uh, more actively. With looking at different possibilities and that might not be a direct possibility like with CAC, which is fantastic. And if students are interested in going into those kinds of job fields and things like that, they can, which is fantastic. But what about volunteerism? What about really focusing in on students um, and giving them more volunteer opportunities? That might not be in a specific career field, but they can also practice and learn more about leadership skills. Uh, learn more about how to organize a project, which is critical when we're thinking about the job skills that are needed in today's world. Um, it's also really teaching uh, kids about caring, caring for others, caring about your community. Uh, which I think is something that we all need to really focus on as we head even more towards the next few years. So I think that we can think more creatively about how to incorporate the business community. And also give back, have students give back to the community itself. Thank you.
This is, this is the Ball Chatham School District Board of Education Candidate Forum sponsored by the Chet, Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce. And the Chatham Area Public Library District. The next question, how should the school district handle Title IX concerns when it comes to access by all students? To interscholastic athletic opportunities, including practice times, days of games and promotional considerations? We'll start with two minutes for Sherry Winters.
I was thinking it was Tiffany's turn. Um, Title IX, uh, we, could you repeat that question, please?
How should the school district handle Title IX concerns when it comes to access by all students for interscholastic athletic opportunities? That includes practice times, days of games and promotional considerations?
Um, so I'm going to assume that Title IX we're talking about um. The access to be able to participate in sports regardless of um. Gender. So um, I think that first of all, and I had told this before, but being the parent of a gay son, I, I. I can bring that point of view to the, to this discussion. Um, I believe we must accommodate every possible way. We must accommodate every. We must make every accommodation possible for every student to be comfortable. Unfortunately, sometimes allowing transgender students in the restroom that they identify with places. The majority of students in a very uncomfortable position. Um, I would bet every one of us and all of those watching, we're uncomfortable to take that shower after PE. Or even changing clothes in front of our peers, let alone in front of those of the opposite biological sex. Um, I have always said that we should allow students to use staff restrooms. Or what as I referred to throughout the schools, because I've been through all of them, um, as the individual restrooms throughout the school. So we should allow that. If they're uncomfortable with being in the locker room, et cetera. That would allow for students to participate where normally that would be a, a stepping point, a problem. Um, I'm gonna also add that allowing uh, biological males to participate in the female sports. Um, I'm not for that. I think there's a lot of opportunities in the Chatham School District for students to participate in other events. And not every child's gonna be able to participate in everything they want to do in life. That's just the way life goes.
Ms. Saunders, your name was brought up. Would you like thirty seconds? You do have an opportunity uh, at the end of everybody else's comments, just in the way we've. Laid out the uh, the positions for the candidates.
I don't need it. I think she was just thinking I was.
Understood. Thank you. Uh, now Andrea Rediger, how should the school district handle Title IX concerns? When it comes to access by all students for sports, that includes practice times, days of games and promotional considerations?
So this question seems to me like something that would be the role of a, the manager or a compliance officer. Um, I don't have the background or understanding of all of the rules to be able to perform that task. We have people to do that and we need to follow every single guideline to the letter of the law as it pertains to access. Um, I'm not sure if this is a ideology question or if it's a question like, do I understand all the rules? And how would I implement them if that was my job to implement them? Um, I'm not gonna answer that second part because I have no idea exactly how to implement all of those things. Um, again, that would be the job of a professional. Um, I don't think that ideology is a good way to make decisions on the board. Um, I think collaborative. Decision-making makes a whole lot more sense. So um, I think that, that's something that I would leave to the people that we hired to do that job. Thanks.
William Brewer, how should the school district handle Title IX concerns when it comes to access by all students to interscholastic athletic opportunities? Including practice times, days of games and promotional considerations?
So first, To- Title IX is not optional. I- i- it's the law. Um, it's, it's, it's the responsibility of the school district to provide those equitable opportunities for um, those activities. Um, with respect to addressing concerns with them, um, that goes back to communications. Um, if a parent um, or anyone in the district has a concern um, about a Title IX issue. They need to be able to address that with the district and I get a um, answer that represents um, either it is in compliance. Or we need to make an adjustment there. Um, one of the things I well mentioned is over the course of the past a year, you know, pre-COVID stuff. We, we had, have made some adjustments, you know, we have dance and cheer at both uh, male and female basketball games now. Um, there's been adjustments to how the band is. There's been adjustments to the access to gyms and practice times. Even with respect to how some people use verbiage to reference gyms as quote-unquote, boys' gym or, or girls' gyms. You know, we refer to them as East and West now and we're trying to stamp that out. Um, I do want to make one distinction though, that I think a lot of people may not fully understand about Title IX and, and it is one that concerns me. Uh, according to Title IX, they do not include dance and cheer in their number counting. And their maintenance of um, what is truly equitable. Um, that is concerning. And um, that is an important distinction because tho- those two um, extracurricular sports activities should be included. Thank you.
Laura Calderon, how should the school district handle Title IX concerns when it comes to access by all students for interscholastic athletic opportunities? Including practice times, days of games and promotional considerations?
Yeah, uh, so Title IX uh, is a federal law that I think's been around since the early seventies. I want to say nineteen seventy-two. Um, but essentially it, it was enacted to help prevent gender discrimination in, in like. Educational athletic opportunities and, and so I think it's our athletic director's job. Uh, to assure that we're complying with Title IX. Um, I do think that the board would play a role with regard to hearing concerns from students or parents. About uh, Title IX, um, what they might, I view as Title IX uh, concerns or complaints. Um, and, and then obviously as a board, we need to listen and, and act accordingly and, and potentially work with the athletic director. To address any um, non-compliance issues um, or issues of equity that may exist. Um, in terms of practice times and uh, game times and gym use, um, it is important that we. Um, work to assure that uh, both girls and boys' sports. Um, get equal opportunity for primetime um, game space and um, practice time. And, and assure that uh, we're providing equal opportunities to both male and female sports.
Thank you. Ann Strahley, how should the school district handle Title IX concerns when it comes to practice times, days of games and promotional considerations?
I'm gonna attack this question um, from a little bit of my own experience. So um, I, I work at UIS. And for many years, I was the chair of the Intercollegiate Athletic Committee, which basically was a liaison, a faculty and staff committee. That was a liaison between the academic side and the athletic side and UIS is an.
And UIS is an NCAA Division Two school. Okay, so at that level, we obviously have a Title IX compliance officer that works with the athletic department. And I know that we have one here at the Ball Chatham School District as well within the athletic department, probably the athletic director. So in the situation that I was in, if there was ever a concern, a Title IX concern that would come up, we, as a committee, we may hear it. We may, you know, we may hear the concern and that kind of thing, but then we would turn to our expert and Title IX can be pretty complicated. And so we would then turn to our expert or Title IX expert to, to help us understand what was going on with it. And then they would actually look at the policy and that kind of thing and what was happening. I see that as very congruent to being on the school board as well. It would be a way that we were information gathering if there wasn't complaint. And then we would rely on our expert within the school district to help us understand what was going on as well as listening to the complaint, whether it was coming from a parent or from a student as well and addressing that directly. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Saunders, how should the school district handle Title IX concerns when it comes to access by all students for sporting activities, including practice times, days of games and promotional considerations?
Yes, so I tend to agree with most of what's said here. That's really the purview of the athletic director. And the board's role is really to hear those concerns and to perhaps if necessary facilitate that conversation between the individuals or entities or maybe even sports, bringing those concerns in the athletic director. We receive training on Title IX as part of our duties. It's a required training at UIS. So I do have some of that training. I also have served on the intercollegiate athletics committee here at UIS. I have also been serving on the Glenwood Athletic Boosters as well. And so we do pay attention to things in boosters like Title IX and equitable like funding of sports, right? So we pay attention to how we support sports even in funding, for example, equipment needs and things like that. So I think, you know, there's spaces where we can definitely, you know, where, where it's certainly falling outside of just the responsibility of the athletic director. But there, you know, are obviously entities like boosters that have to pay attention to these things as well. I think promotion of sports equally is, is a really important thing, an idea to think about. Because one of the ways that you build an audience is by paying attention to these sorts of issues. So you build an audience, you, you build support for your teams by promoting them regularly. You build support for your teams by again, giving them time when most people would be available to come watch them play, right? So I think there are ways to, to think about Title IX concerns more broadly that don't just rely on, on the athletic director alone. Thanks.
Thank you for your answers. Again, these are questions cultivated from submissions from the community. The next question for Andrea Rediger, what are your thoughts about the district's dress code? And enforcement standards on things like leggings or length of shorts? And where do you stand on implementing school uniforms? You have two minutes.
Oh my goodness. So I have an autistic child and she wears leggings every day. And she cannot wear jeans and it has been a thing in my life for the last 10 years, the things with the pants. I can't fight about that. I simply cannot fight about that. So I think that girls should be able to wear leggings. I think that girls should be able to wear whatever they want to wear and be treated respectfully and be safe in any environment where they are, no matter what. And boys are responsible for their actions and girls are responsible for their actions as well.
Thank you. William Brewer, what are your thoughts about the district's dress code and enforcement standards on things like leggings or length of shorts? And where do you stand on implementing school uniforms?
In my immediate opinion, I'm for the, the students of our district being able to wear what they choose to wear, what, what they're comfortable in and wearing. And apologize for being slightly brief here, but with respect to uniforms, I would be against school uniforms. I believe there's an important expression component that we need to provide our children with the ability to express themselves with what they wear. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Calderon, what are your thoughts about the district's dress code when it comes to leggings and length of shorts? And where do you stand on implementing school uniforms?
Yeah, so this is, this is an issue that's, that's come up over the course of the last couple of years with some dress code changes, I think particularly at the high school in prohibiting leggings and, and and dictating the length of shorts. And I do think it becomes kind of an equity issue when you focus on a particular gender, which seems to be the case when you prohibit something like leggings or dictate lengths of shorts. I, while I think it's appropriate to assure that we don't have any inappropriate body parts revealed with regard to any student, regardless of genders, dress code. I think that to me, it seems a little archaic to prohibit something like leggings that is, is clearly aimed at a type of clothing item that is typically worn by females. So I have some real concerns with that. In terms of dress code, I wouldn't support, I'm sorry, in, in terms of school uniforms. I would not support school uniforms. I don't think that's necessary. I think that students should be comfortable in what they're wearing and as long as, as I mentioned, it's appropriate. I, I don't see a need to to adopt a, a school uniform.
Thank you. Anne Straley, what are your thoughts about the district's dress code and enforcing standards on leggings or the length of shorts? And where do you stand on implementing school uniforms?
First of all, I'll take school uniforms. I'm, I'm not in favor of enforcing school uniforms. I think that we need to let our students express themselves, how they wish and, and, and enjoy what they're wearing within reason. Let's be honest here when we're talking about actual enforcement of a, of clothing, it tends to end up on the female side more so always across the board nationally than it does on the, on the male side. And leggings are directed right at women. And so we need to think about equity in terms of what, when we're looking at dress codes, we need to think about equity. We also need to think about equity when we think about enforcement. Are we always coming down on females in our school as opposed to, to looking at males as well? So I think that we really need to be careful of that, very, very careful about that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany Saunders, what are your thoughts about the district's dress code and enforcing standards on leggings? More of the length of shorts and where do you stand on implementing school uniforms?
Yeah, so I, I, I don't have a different perspective, honestly. I'm a sociologist. I'm a social scientist. This is simply put, an equity issue. We know that women's and girls' bodies tend to be policed more than, than boys' and men's bodies. So I think, you know, if we're, if we're there, there's really no way to implement a dress code that doesn't have a gender component. We just have not seen that done anywhere. Even when, you know, districts in the past have had tank top dress codes, those coat, dress codes always only applied to girls. It was very interesting. It was, you know, they had to be a certain thickness and, and, and other things. And so it meant that in some instances, girls were not allowed to wear or tank tops at all, but boys were allowed to wear tank tops. So there was a little bit of a, I remember having this conversation with my son about that and about, you know, what are we exposing? The shoulders? So is there something different about girl's shoulders than boy's shoulders that we need to take into consideration? And so I think there's no, there's no way to have these sorts of dress code without there being some sort of, of gender equity concern. And with related, with, in, with regard to the uniform, I wouldn't be in favor of that either. For the reasons that everyone else has said, you know, clothing is a really important part of self-expression. And, you know, we need to allow, allow our students that space to express themselves in that way.
And now two minutes to Sherri Winters, your thoughts on implementing standards on leggings or length of shorts? And where do you stand on implementing school uniforms?
Well, I'm gonna start with school uniforms first. I would say no to school uniforms. I think that students like to reflect their personalities and, and be themselves in choosing their clothing. They have so few things that they can actually say, that's my decision. However, I do feel that, and this is regarded to both sexes. If you can see under garments, then the clothing should not be allowed. And that's the problem with leggings. Being in the schools and seeing the cheaper leggings, you do tend to see undergarments through. And so I would like to see the girls be able to wear leggings. I don't care if the boys wear the leggings, but as long as we don't see the undergarments through. Shorts that cannot be seen under a long T-shirt, that is very uncomfortable for everyone involved. Been there, seen, seen or haven't seen that. Another question that comes up with this is that a few years back, and I don't know if it still exists, but the cheerleaders were not allowed to wear their spring sport cheerleading uniform to school on Spirit's Day. And again, it was because, you know, maybe the shoulders were seen or it was too short. And my question was, if they can't wear it to school, how can they wear it to the sporting event? So that's something that I think we need to explore if that's still the case. I think we need to talk about that and how that could be changed. But again, if you can see undergarments, then they should not be worn.
Thank you all for your answers. This is the Ball Chatham School District Board of Education Candidate Forum sponsored by the Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Area Public Library District. And we are approaching the final moments here where it's time for closing statements. Each candidate will be given three minutes and we'll start with William Brewer.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to thank all the community members for submitting their questions tonight. This is certainly a facilitated, good discussion. But I, I want to bring the conversation back to the two significant issues that I feel are immediately facing our district. And one issue is the return to full day in-person learning and overall normalcy post-COVID.
Thank you, Greg.
Another issue is the upcoming
I apologize, Mr. Brewer, Ms. Winters, if you could mute yourself. Thank you. And Mr. Brewer, you're, go ahead.
Thank you. The, the two issues facing our district right now, that's on the minds of many of us, are the return to normalcy from COVID and expansion in full day in-person learning. And the teachers' contract negotiations. In my opinion, experience should be a deciding factor in this upcoming school board election. Now would be a very challenging time for a great deal of on-the-job training and it could cause things to slow down. If reelected, my experience is having been on this board for four years and serving as its president during the COVID pandemic, puts me in a unique position to be 100% ready to go on day one. Please know that a vote for William Brewer is a vote for in-person learning, fiscal responsibility and experienced leadership. I humbly ask for your vote on April 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. And now three minutes to Laura Calderon.
I'd like to once again thank the Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Area Public Library for hosting tonight's forum. Mr. Greg Bishop for moderating and all of, of you who have tuned in virtually and stuck through with us through these two hours this evening. And also to my fellow candidates for the thoughtful and spirited discussion this evening. Thank you to also to all the teachers, staff and administrators for all the work they have done in helping to make this challenging year as successful as possible, given the circumstances. And as we move forward, it's important to recognize that our children's education and all that comes with it is extremely personal. And it's an emotional issue for everyone. I think it's okay for all of us to have different opinions, but it's critical for our school board to practice civility and compassion as we move forward. These are traits that I try to emulate in my life and in all that I do. And that is what will allow us to move forward and bring our community together with the common goal of providing for our educational needs and providing the educational needs for all students and protecting our children's future. I believe that my experience and my ability to build consensus and cultivate community investment and partnerships put, put me in a unique position to serve our community on the Ball Chatham Board of Education. I look forward to continuing to work on the issues of importance to our school community and, and doing all that I can to help our district to strive to be on the cutting edge of educational trends. My name is Laura Calderon and I would appreciate your consideration in the April 6th election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Straley, three minutes for your closing statements.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for putting together this forum and also for the library for making sure that it's going out to all of the people out there. And thank you for joining us and hearing all of us give our answers and our thoughts. Really appreciate it. It's all part of the process. As we all know, this is a difficult time for everybody as we negotiate our way out of COVID and work towards normalcy. Hopefully, people are moving at very different speeds according to their own issues and challenges. And we really need to recognize that and appreciate that and show a little grace really for the different speeds in which people are coming back. As I hope I have proven this evening, I'm more than capable of helping our school district move through this current challenge and help work towards a better future. We have to get students back to school full-time and in person. We have teacher contract negotiations that are coming up and the state is facing an increasing teacher shortage. We also have to obviously keep a handle on our budget and practice fiscal responsibility. With my years of educational and leadership experience and my investment in the Ball Chatham Schools throughout the years through many years of volunteer work as the president at the PTO at the elementary school level, also my work in helping with BCEF and also looking at my volunteerism throughout the years from my kids when they were in kindergarten all the way now until high school. I've proven that I do invest a lot of time in the Ball Chatham School District. And so this is the natural progression for me is to actually hopefully be on the school board as well. I believe I'm perfectly poised to assume this responsibility and I am asking for your vote on April 6th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now Tiffany Saunders, three minutes for your closing statement.
Yes, thank you to everyone who's been involved tonight. I think we're, we're all really excited to be wrapping up the, the, these forums and just really having that, that opportunity to share, share our ideas with you. So the circumstances of COVID are certainly an important, immediate concern and an understandable focus of, of our community. The stress and uncertainty of the pandemic can't be overstated. But I want to remind us that we've been dealing with COVID for one year, one very long year, but one year nonetheless. We seem to be on the verge of controlling the virus as evidenced by the updated ISB standards just this week. So the circumstances of COVID will be an immediate concern of the board, but it stands to reason that concern will diminish over the course of the four years, the term to which you're electing board members. So we'll need more members who understand this immediate need, but also have a vision for the future, a vision for what our district can look like, a vision to address longstanding challenges in our district, a vision for meeting needs of our entire community. Some of these challenges are over a decade old. That's 10 years versus the one year of meeting the challenges of COVID. That metric is important. So I'm running for school board because I have a vision for the future. I'm running for school board because I have ideas about how to tackle these decade-old challenges. I'm running for school board because simply sharing these ideas with district leadership has not led to progress. I'm running for school board because working behind the scenes has not led to results. I'm running for school board because my son graduates in two years and my daughter starts kindergarten in four. I'm running for school board so that new voices, new ideas and new experiences are brought into every conversation and decision. I'm running for school board so that the board more accurately reflects the richness of our community. I'm running for school board because I want to hand in repairing the division of our district and our community. A return to the underlying philosophy of words like nation and village. If the long-term health and progress of our district and our community are important to you, I hope you'll vote for me on April 6th.
Thank you. Sheri Winters, you now have three minutes for closing statements.
Okay, so thank you to all of you for spending, this includes the community, for spending your evening with us. And thank you, Greg, for moderating or hosting us. Bringing back to the Title IX, I still believe we must allow equal opportunities to both genders, accommodating for all with respect for all. I just wanted to put that out there. Again, I will bring a unique perspective to the Board of Education. That is not saying that I will always agree with one side or the other, but rather be the informant for the board. And I do truly believe it takes a village to raise our children to be successful. I want to continue to see this district grow and to be able to offer all that it can to all of us. There will always be stumbling blocks, but we as a community can get past them and provide the numerous opportunities for student growth and success. And we know that the Ball Chatham School District has numerous opportunities for our students. I have taken great pride in educating our children, and I would love to continue in guiding the school district. By the way, those children, if you're listening, you will always be my kids. I want to take pride in being a part of the team of the Board of Education, and I want to be a voice for our educators, especially during this negotiation time. I humbly ask for your vote, and I am and I always will be Mrs. Winters.
Thank you. And now Andrea Rediger, three minutes for your closing statements.
Thank you to everyone for submitting these questions. You weren't messing around, were you? It's time to get this show on the road, and Election Day just cannot get here soon enough for me. I have quite a range of life experiences that give me a vocabulary and a basis for this next chapter. I've worked in banking, tax preparation, financial accounting, cost accounting, and auditing. I've palpated cows. Since then, I've worked with the public and in the small business with payroll and insurance and taxes and regulations. A lot of this work is emotionally fraught, and it involves limited financial resources. I have to communicate in a way that makes technical scientific language understandable. I've had to balance what would be best for my family with what's best for the practice. I've also studied epidemiology and virology, and I have that vocabulary and basis of understanding. I can operate in these spaces, and I'm committed to aggressively increasing my understanding for the benefit of this community as a whole. I've wanted to use these skills to serve our district for years, nearly a decade. I have the time and the energy, and I'm so ready to get started. So thank you to our viewers and our moderator and to the chamber and to the library and to my fellow candidates for making this so fun. Please reach out if you have any questions. You can find me on Facebook, or you can email me. It's Andrea L. Rediger at Gmail, L as in Larry. Thanks again, and have a good night.
This has been the Ball Chatham School District Board of Education Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Area Public Library District. I want to thank all the candidates for giving me the opportunity to pose the questions to you and for having a nice civil forum here this evening for the community to tune into virtually. I'm Greg Bishop. Again, thank you so much for the time. And Ashley, I'll turn it back to you. We brought this in in under two hours. It's amazing how quick that flies. And Ashley, I think you are on mute.
Thank you. Got it. Thanks, Greg. The goal for tonight's forum was to incorporate a variety of questions and topics. Selected questions were based on applicability to all candidates without bias. Thank you again to our candidates, our moderator Greg, Greg Bishop, and to all of our viewers for the time committed to this evening's virtual forum. The Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce and the Chatham Area Public Library, please to bring this forum to our community for means of education on April 6th for the consolidated general election. As mentioned, Election Day voting will take place on Tuesday, April 6th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., with early voting options now available. To find your polling locations or additional information on early and mail-in voting, please visit www.singhamcountingclerk.com. A recording of this forum will be available on the websites of the Chatham Area Public Library and Chatham Area Chamber of Commerce, along with introductory videos dedicated to the Village of Chatham, Ball Township, the Chatham Township, and the Chatham Area Public Library District election candidates. Thank you again for your time, everyone, and thank you to our candidates for their commitment to run for this community for the election to serve as a voice for the Ball Chatham Board of Education, and I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thank you all.
Thank you.